What is it?
Dave.
Yeah, just fine. I don't trust them. All set? All right, one more minute, okay? You're good. Yeah, just give me one more minute, all right?
You're all set, seven to call.
Seven. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 7th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. I call this meeting to order. Mr. Conley, any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just one announcement I'd like to make. As you all know, I think people take a moment to think about what Saturday is. Some people say, what's Saturday? Saturday is November 11th, Veterans Day. One of the most hallowed holidays, remembrances, along with Memorial Day and a lot of others. But if it wasn't for the veterans, all of us wouldn't be here. So we keep the veterans, your mother, your father, your sister, your brother, cousins, aunts and uncles. Just say thank you. Someone no longer with us. My dad fought in World War II. I talk to him every day. He's no longer here. And I have a lot of other folks that I know and love dearly that are no longer here that fought in World War II, the Vietnam War, and other wars. So they'll take a moment of memory and silence and just say thank you to our veterans, whether it's in your heart and soul, or if you go down into the cemetery, which I like to do, and say thank you to the veterans when you go by the veterans at Canton County Cemetery. So you just have a moment of silence and memory and honor of the veterans and the ones who are alive. There's an Arafat maid is doing a nice luncheon on Saturday, November 11, 11. So the end of World War I. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you.
Phil Lockman.
First on the agenda, Mr. Chair, we have the proposed pavilion at Paul Revere Heritage Site. And we have Mr. George Camo speaking on this.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hello, Judge.
I was before you, just briefly, a few weeks ago, giving you a prelude to a little bit more of a fuller presentation for this evening. And Chairman Theodore saw this last night, as well as this was presented before the Canton Community Preservation Act Committee. As I had said, two weeks ago, we had filed a request before the, for CPA funding for the Paul Revere Heritage Site. And I'm here tonight representing the Revere and Son Heritage Trust. We are in the process of working with the CPA folks to build onto the public park, of which you are the park commissioners, a pavilion in the site of the original barn location. As you know, the yellow barn had been picked up and moved to the location where it sits today. And in the locus of the original foundation, we propose to build a covered pavilion. That pavilion footprint is approximately 2,000 square feet of space, will fit approximately 100 folks under there. And in your packets, you'll see some representative drawings of that pavilion that have been put together by our consultants and our architects, EXP Studios. The goal is to create a pavilion that will cost in the construction range of $250,000, $50,000 of which we will spend from the trust's funds. That is largely ARPA money that we have and that we're working through and that we have to spend by a certain period of time under the federal rules and the county rules relative to the expenditure, which means that this will be a shovel-ready project in time for July of 2024 after town meeting and after the fiscal year commences. If we get a favorable vote from the Community Preservation Committee, we would begin the design process. But what you're seeing in your packets tonight is essentially what that pavilion could look like on that footprint. The site has been incredibly well-used, as you know. The homecoming concerts, children's events, veterans' events, and just a number of really stellar spaces in Canton's common. And so the idea is to create a covered pavilion on an existing space and provide that pavilion with a modest amount of power and access to some utilities so that it's a covered space and is a performance pavilion for the amenities as part of the public park. The floor will be just sort of an aggregate flooring. We don't expect that it's going to be anything more than what you're seeing here, which is a timber-framed building that recalls the original construction of the Joseph Warren Revere Barn. You're seeing also the architect has placed a keynote, the Oculus, into that design. And it will go before the zoning board of appeals as part of the process that we're going through. But again, the goal here is to make this entire board aware of this. You've been aware. We've talked about this over the last couple of months. And let you know that we presented last evening. It seemed to be received favorably, but there's a lot of projects before CPA this year. So where it falls, we won't know until January. That's pretty much the sum and substance of what I'm here to present. You have the full application, and I would welcome any questions that you have.
Quick question, Judge. Is there any way that someone could get online and look at the plan, the structure of how it's going to look?
We will make it available online.
How many people? I know we discussed that last night, but how many people?
Approximately 100 individuals. A lot of it depends on how, you know, seating and how it's set up and what the event is. We were also, you know, talking, I talked with one of the neighbors earlier today about this. And the barn hasn't received its security package yet. The mill already has a security package relative to alarms and cameras. But we would imagine that there will be the same treatment to the museum and the barn that would give us an additional layer of security after hours on the site, because sometimes these become attractive nuisances to, you know, whatever. And we want to make sure that it's protected and supported. The number of people live in that area, too, and so we'll be working with the neighbors and our neighborhood advisory group as we start programming the space. But theoretically, with a building like this, it could be online as early as fall of 2024.
You have the foundation delineation. Is that staying there?
Yeah, the foundation is an actual artifact on the site.
This is going to be a step up to it?
Well, we have ADA issues that we're going to address as part of this so that there will be a barrier there that's required.
Okay.
It will be fully accessible, however.
ADA, right?
I'm sorry?
ADA, right?
Correct. Yeah.
Three with Mr. Camo. Two things. I assume this is going to be a permanent structure, and I would hope the floor would be waterproof because when it rains, it pours, correct?
Yeah, you know, the drainage is pretty good at that site, and you know, we have a pretty good sprinkler system, but it's still, I don't know what that floor surface is. I do know that there's a note that the architect has put there on the plan that talks about an exposed aggregate flooring. I think it's going to be natural materials, though. I don't think it's meant to be, you know, totally impervious. I'm not sure. So we'll have to get that information to you.
Yeah, do you, Mr. Chairman?
I mean, there's going to be a roof on this.
Yes, but why don't we still get in there, and I don't want to have to replace it in three, five years. That's my concern.
Oh, oh, you mean the floor?
Yes.
Oh, it'll be natural materials. It will be an outdoor materials. It won't be wood or anything like that.
And I was, when I opened it up, I was a little bit taken back. I was more expecting a gazebo type, like you're having, and I can't, downtown, you know, it has one, and other towns, surrounding towns have one, and that's where people can get married. And I looked at this, I just assumed, maybe I shouldn't assume, but it was more like a period of the time. Is that correct?
But keep in mind that actually the design was chosen to be a timber-framed building, which was, the barn is a timber-framed building. It's actually all that survives from the Revere property is the timber-framed building. And we're mimicking some of those same construction techniques. So it's not a gazebo. It definitely does hearken to an industrial use, which is what was there. And also keep in mind, we service a tremendous amount of people. Whenever we have an event like the Toe Jam Puppet Band, you know, kids' events, we're literally getting hundreds of people at this sort of common space. So I don't think a gazebo would have been big enough to accommodate the ideas relative to what the townspeople are using the space for.
No, I was just expecting it's going to be the town comm, and that's what's been referred to. Because we don't, they were sold off years ago, the old Crane School was, where Walgreen is, and the form of fire headquarters were. So I was just, I took it as well.
Yeah.
But, but.
You know, a team of people worked on this for a couple of months, and I wasn't, I didn't. So, you know, I'm happy to bring back the.
We're going to blame you anyhow.
I'm happy to take the blame.
This will be available for public rental, correct?
Yeah, so the way the trust is set up, we receive our funding from various sources, and one of those sources would be rental. But keep in mind that it's on the town's property. It's not on the property that is ceded by lease to the trust. So we'll have to work with this organization, with, you know, with the town to capture those funds and make sure that they're appropriated appropriately. Yeah. I mean, you'll note that I don't think that there are a lot more public events at Pequid Side, for instance, for a variety of reasons relative to conservation. This site doesn't have those same restrictions and would be a really desirable place. And we would want to have public, we would want to have some of that, actually.
Anything else for Mr. Camo?
No, thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll report back after January after the vote, and then you'll see it at town meeting if it's successful through the CPA.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thanks.
Phil Lockman, next on the agenda.
Next, we have an update from the Beautification Committee. And I believe we have Mr. Dr. Alan Rappaport here.
Hi, good evening. Alan Rappaport, Five Bridge Hill Road. So the Beautification Committee has a few new members on it. Eleanor McCowell, Mike McHugo's been on it, Chris Conley, and Michael Morway. And last year, we completed the Broadiron Fence at the viaduct in front of that park area, which I think is a nice attribute. And this year, we decided that we want to illuminate the viaduct from many different areas. So as we all know, the viaduct is such an important structure for this town. It's probably one of the symbols of this town. So we're looking to illuminate it from when you enter and especially from the Paul Revere Heritage Site. I think it would be quite attractive for everybody. But it becomes a little bit a difficult proposition how to do it because the town doesn't own all the land where the viaduct is. Eversource has some of it. The, I'm not sure the name of the condominium association on Walpole Street, but they maintain some of the area. And then we have to deal with the Revere Holdings, say Bernie Plants, with his organization to try to get the lighting in that side. So basically, what we're looking for is somebody on the select board who wants to work with the beautification committee and can help us navigate some of the areas that we don't have the expertise at. But I think that would be a really attractive addition to the town. So I'm putting it out there. Who would like to work with us?
Well, actually, I was on the beautification committee before Chris Conley stepped on it. And like I say, getting back to the fencing that was just put up around that waterfall there, that was, that was going back four or five years.
Right.
We started working on that. And then COVID came up, and then the pricing and all that went up. So I'm glad to see that finally came up. Like I said, that looks nice. And the idea of that was to tie the viaduct into the Paul Revere Heritage because it was the same type of fencing. You kind of have that flow through there, so that does look nice. So I have no problem going back on it because I, if anybody else would like to, but I would, I would enjoy to be back on that committee. Are you looking for someone tonight?
Yes. Or you can, or you can, you can give us an answer.
Have someone in mind?
No, it's really open for anybody. But I think, you know, it's, we're looking for somebody who really can help us direct us, you know.
The federal government, because some of that property, the federal government, I was there when the plaque was put on 20 years ago. So just note the plaque, this is a historical monument. As we all know, there's only two of these in the world, one's in Russia and one's in Canton, Mass. So, and you have to get together, make sure, you talk to Amtrak, you talk to the NBA, because the lights, you know, who knows what they have if they shine on the conductor or the engineer's eyes. You don't know. So we have to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's to make sure. So, I mean.
Geez, maybe he should do it then, huh?
I'd be happy to do it. I'd be happy to do it. That's not a problem. Alan and I went to high school together, and he's been a friend since 45, 50 years.
To our 45th?
Yeah, I think it'd be a nice idea. I think we could all work together.
Because I want to make sure that it's done correctly, so no one can come back at us and say, well, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. And, you know, we can sit down and have a meeting and discuss what we can do. And I can reach out to several people that I know, if you want, if that's okay with the board. I have no problem with that.
And John, I'll see you at our 45th high school.
45th anniversary, Canton High School.
Take lots of pictures.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. I'll give you a call, Alan. Thank you.
Next on the agenda.
Next, we have the Town Administrator Report. Mr. Duty.
Thank you, Mr. Lockman, Mr. Moderator, not moderator, Chair. Just a few items tonight to update the folks on. First, the announcement on the trash and recycle collection for the town. So typically, if there's a holiday, trash and recycle gets bumped a day in advance. That is not the case with Veterans Day. So the trash and recycle collection will not be delayed, so it will be picked up on its normal schedule. And then the transfer station on Pine Street will be open on Veterans Day, which is Saturday from 7:30 to 4:00. Second, just an update on the, speaking of trash, on the trash and recycle contract. I know I've been updating you periodically on the status of that RFP. So we have completed the RFP, a lot of hard work from Randy Scollins and Jen Chameleon, DPW. So that RFP is complete, and it's going to be published in the State Goods and Services Bulletin on Monday. And that starts the bid timeline. So once that gets published, the announcement will be advertised in the citizen and comp vises also, as required. And the deadline will be December 12th by noon to receive the RFPs. So once we get those, we'll sit down and go through those and see who the winning bidders are. Could be, could be one, could be two companies. As most folks know, right now, we have two companies. We have Republic that does the actual trash collection, and we have Waste Management that does the recycle. So, but we put the bid out, so it could be one or two companies. We'll see what comes back. And then the last item that I have for you is that the review of the warrant articles for the special town meeting were completed by the FinCom and then reviewed by Town Council. So that's complete. It went to the printers and hopefully arrived in residents' mailboxes on Monday, November 13th, which was, you know, our target timeline. And so then, as a reminder to folks, the special town meeting is scheduled for November 20th at 7:00 PM at the Canton High School Auditorium. And should a second night be necessary, it'll be the following evening, November 21st, which is Tuesday, at the Canton High School Auditorium. And that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Duty.
Mr. Rapp, Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question on the trash.
Sure.
Okay, so it's my understanding that the wet trash costs more to collect than the recycling trash. And if that's the case, which I believe it is because I've been on the Sustainability Committee before, is there a way we can educate and continue to educate the community on what is proper recycling and what is not? Because that could be a source of revenue for the town that's hidden. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
May I answer that?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Duty.
Yeah, so, yes, so as part of the RFP,
Yeah.
there is an education component in the RFP that requires the winning bidder to provide materials to the town to educate residents on, for example, what's appropriate to put in recycle and what's not, so that we don't get penalized for things that are in recycle that shouldn't be.
Yeah.
That's part of the RFP.
And we could make money on this.
You can.
Because if people, people may put jars with stuff in the trash, but if they dumped the stuff that was in the jar, in the sink or whatever, and recycled the glass, we could actually save money on collecting wet trash and increase our revenues very simply.
Yes.
So hopefully, we can do something like that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for the suggestion. Mr. Lockman.
Next, we move on to new business. So item number one is a personal day request. The Canton Municipal Employees Association are holding their annual holiday party and have requested the donation of three personal days to be raffled off at the party. This is an annual request the board traditionally supports. So I move that the board approve the donation of three personal days for the CMEA to raffle off during the annual holiday party to be used by municipal employees only.
Second. Motion made in second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero.
Next, Mr. Chair, we have a request to use St. Jerron's property. A resident asked us for the use of the property for parking for a three-day event in November. Resident was required to reach out to abutters of the property and explain the use, as well as provide a certificate of insurance naming the town of Canton as additionally insured to protect the town from any liability. So I think I saw Mr. Barati here, if you want to speak on it.
Did you want to speak on that, Mr. Barati, or?
I guess I don't have to. Everybody's been noted by the.
So just.
Yeah, you can come up to the mic or the table, which, and then just identify yourself with your.
That's fine. Just name and address.
The abutter list was sent out. All the certs for the insurance, I believe, was sent over. So we're just waiting for you.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. All right.
Next, Bradley Estates is once again holding their annual Winter Lights Festival and have asked for several one-day liquor license permits for the event. I don't know if anybody's here from Bradley Estates or Winter Lights program. All right. Here we go. I move that the board approve the application to obtain a special license to serve alcoholic beverages at 25 one-day events for Winter Lights at Bradley Estates for 2023 at 2468 B Washington Street. The events will be held on November 24th, 25th, 26th, December 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 6th, 7th, 8th, 10th, 13th, 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 20th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 26th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 30th, and 31st. I think that was 25.
That was right.
Sound right?
It was right.
Continue, those events are held from 4:30 PM to 8:30 PM each night in a contingent upon building commissioner, fire chief, and police chief approval.
Second. Motion made in second. Any other further comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero. It's a great time of day. It's a nice, it's a nice event. Next.
Next, we have three parks and recreation rink assistants that have applied to be rehired for the seasonal position. Both HR and Parks and Rec to recommend that they be hired. So I move that the board rehire Kaylee Furbush, Kaylee Cohen, and Laura Valkanus as part-time seasonal Parks and Recreation Rink Assistants.
Second. Motion made in second. Any other further comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero.
Next, we have the vendor warrant and payroll warrant. So the vendor warrant total for the week of 10/27/2023. Payroll warrant total, payroll warrant total for the week of 11/3/2023, Concerning elected officials, health insurance eligibility at its last meeting, this was the one that Ms. Thomas presented. As we typically do, the board takes the matter under advisement at the last meeting per the Administrative Code. And now we're just taking a vote on it because we've had time to look at it.
Do you want to update anything with the update, or do you want to just?
So it's what was said at the last meeting that if this, if Ms. Thomas's article, which should be in the next town meeting, not the special town meeting, but the annual town meeting, the health insurance would not apply to elected officials.
Okay.
But the people, Mr. Chairman, grandfather didn't have it now.
Correct.
Correct.
Which is only a couple of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it's nine or two.
So, so we have a motion. We have a second?
And I'm not one of them.
No, I didn't, I didn't make a motion. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you did.
I move that the board approve the amendment to the elected official health insurance policy.
Second. Motion been made in seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
All right, now we have minutes to approve. I move that the board approve the minutes from the meeting of October 24th, 2023.
Second. Motion been made in seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero.
I move that the board approve and partially release minutes from executive session for June 7th, 2022, May 24th, 2022, July 12th, 2022, and August 30th, 2022.
Second. Motion made in seconded. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero.
I move that the board approve but not release the minutes from executive session for June 21st, 2022, July 26th, 2022, August 2nd, 2022, September 20th, 2022, October 25th, 2022, and January 31st, 2023.
Second. Motion made in seconded. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero.
Next, Mr. Chair, we have some topics that were not anticipated by the chair, including one that is going to take me a few minutes to make a motion on. So first, Mr. Chair, we have the acquisition of Unit 5104 in the parking space by the Canton Affordable Housing Trust. So this is the draft motion, draft select board motion for approval of acquisition of Unit 5104 in parking space by the Canton Affordable Housing Trust, dated November 7th, 2023. Whereas pursuant to the development agreement as amended between the town of Canton and Canton Holdings LLC, as developer of the Plymouth Rubber redevelopment site, Canton Holdings is to convey to the Canton Affordable Housing Trust, Unit 5104, for the purchase price of $1. Whereas the trust intends to sell the unit as a market rate unit and use the proceeds of the sale to further its affordable housing purposes. Whereas the trust has been advised that the marketability of the unit would be enhanced if it were to be marketed together with the rights to a deeded parking space. Whereas the trust has negotiated to purchase an appropriate parking space for the purchase price of $10,000 to be funded through the use of mitigation funds in return to mitigation after the sale of the unit. Whereas pursuant to the trust declaration of trust dated February 2nd, 2022, the trust is authorized to acquire real property, but only with the approval of the Canton Select Board. Whereas the trust seeks the approval of the select board so that it may consummate the purchase of the unit and parking space and to proceed to market them for the purposes previously described. Whereas upon the conveyance of the unit to the trust, Canton Holdings will have complied with its obligations under the development agreement to provide moderate income units, with the exception of the additional requirement to provide such units in connection with the development of Lot 8 of the site. Now, therefore, it is hereby moved that the select board hereby approved the proposed acquisition of the unit and parking space by the trust, and it is further moved that the trust is authorized to undertake the marketing of the unit and the parking space as described and to take all actions necessary or reasonable in connection therewith. as described and to take all actions necessary or reasonable in connection therewith, provided, however, that the trust seek the approval of the select board in connection with any sale of the properties in the future. Almost done. Further moved, the select board authorizes and approve the execution and delivery of the acknowledgement and confirmation agreement with Canton Holdings in the form provided by Town Council with respect to Canton Holdings compliance with certain terms of the development agreement as previously described.
Second.
Phew. I missed the beginning. Yeah, let me let me go over that one more time.
So the motion made for the acquisition of unit 5104.
5104.
This is by Canton Affordable Housing Trust. Motion made in seconded. Any other discussions, questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. I'm sorry.
Next, we have the cemetery commitments. These are received monthly from the Public Works Department's commitment of charges at the town-owned Canton Corner Cemetery. So I move that the board approve the cemetery commitments in the amount of $1,975.
Second. Motion moved in seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
And next, this is just to approve the cemetery lots, perpetual care deeds purchased at Canton Corner Cemetery of the town of Canton. So I move that the board approve the cemetery lot perpetual care deed.
Second. Motion made in seconded. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
Next, Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of clerk notes. On Friday, November 3rd, members of the select board attended the Top Golf Canton-Boston. I don't know if it's Boston-Canton, but Top Golf. Boston-Canton ribbon-cutting ceremony for their official opening. The place looks fantastic and we wish them well. On a related note, the roadwork on that section of Dedham Street and the Route 95 ramps is scheduled to be completed in late spring or early summer of 2024. We are looking forward to that project being completed and hopefully seeing a difference in truck traffic throughout town.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the ramp should be finished by the end of this year.
Is it?
They've been working, yes.
Okay, fantastic.
And I just want to make one more thing in Top Golf. The property, the old dilapidated Cumberland Farms, we sat there for almost 12 years, 15 years. That generated roughly $100,000 for this town. As it stands now, we will be getting close to $1 million, accounting real estate tax, meals tax, and liquor tax, close to $1 million for the town. And and all the roadwork that was done was all done through mitigation with Westwood Station. When they built Westwood Station, and the project was five, six years behind. So it's a truly fantastic for the town of Canton. And as I said earlier to folks, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the rush hour traffic, people going to work like normal people in the morning, Top Golf doesn't open until 10:00. And then coming home, they don't know, they, you know, their flux of business is at 6:00, 5:00, 6:00, 7:00. So it works. And originally, there was one lane, one lane each way. Now there's two lanes, two lanes, plus a turning lane and another turning lane coming this way. So and there's four sets of lights, one at Sharman Road, one coming off the ramp, one going on to the ramp, and one at Top Golf, which Top Golf paid for that separately on their own because they thought it was necessary for the safety of their customers. So it's truly, I started negotiation with the board's approval back in December of 2015. That's how long went went through town meeting. It took that long with the pandemic and other things. I just want to say, and I said this at the grand opening, I want to thank the people of Dedham Street, the people of Kirby Road, Kirby Drive, excuse me, and Sharman Industrial Park. They put up with a lot. They have put up with a lot. But if you go down there, if you've been down there recently, it's fantastic. It's changed a lot. And in my humble opinion, in my biased opinion, all for the better. And the biggest thing is. Thank you. It's just.
Well, Mr. Conley.
It's good I got it without the town meeting approval and the good people of this town. And I just happened to run with it and I know some people that were involved and one thing led to another. So thank you.
On behalf of the board of selectmen in the town of Canton, thanks for all the hard work you've done. You really did. John, you put a lot of, I know.
I didn't say for that. I just wanted people to know.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. I know you. No, but I know you put a lot of work into it.
If you look at the place.
It really is. It's that's this is the stuff we need in this town. Like I said, it's a lot of fun, too.
Thank you.
So go ahead, Mr. Law.
On Saturday, November 4th, members of the select board attended the Paul Revere Heritage Gala fundraiser at Brook Meadow. There were about 150 people there and special thanks to Alan Hines, Victor Del Vecchio, the members of the Paul Revere Heritage Trust, Senator Paul Feeney, Walter Timolty, State Rep. Bill Galvin, and our North Fork County Commissioner, Richard Stady, were all in attendance. This coming Saturday, as Mr. Conley mentioned, is Veterans Day. The Veteran Service Services Office will be hosting a luncheon at the town club beginning at 10:00 AM. Doors open at 10:00, refreshments order. There will be a great lunch, some guest speakers, and a chance to talk with some Canton veterans. If interested in learning more or to get tickets, please contact the Veteran Services Office. I did speak with him earlier. He still had tickets and he said, we're not going to turn anybody away. So if you're interested, it's a great time. The open office hours for the select board will be on a brief hold, but these will resume shortly and we will communicate this to the public. If any member of the public does have a question or concern, please email the select board's office or use the online portal and one of us will reach out to you. And then finally, a special thank you to Marilyn Burke from Keller Williams for once again organizing the downtown Scarecrow fundraiser for the Canton Food Pantry. Thank you to the residents and the businesses that participated. That's all I have for announcements. The select board will hold its next meeting on Monday, November 20th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the cafeteria Teachers Lounge, Canton High School, Washington Street. That's all I have.
I will move into the public comment section of the meeting. Just again, just a reminder, this meeting is not meant to be a question-answer format. It's only 15 minutes old. If I would encourage those who wish to speak, we limit it to three minutes. So the others in the room that wish to speak have the opportunity to do so. So whoever likely will stand on the right will go back and forth.
Thank you.
How's that? Thank you. If you could just introduce yourself and.
Name and address.
Name and address, please.
Denise Galvin, Bolivar Street. I never thought that I would feel the need to speak at a select board meeting, though after watching others speak passionately over the past several months on issues that directly affect my family, I decided it was time to take a voice and speak up. I am disheartened and disappointed in the members of the Canton community who continue to come before the select board to publicly vent frustrations and make accusations based on unsubstantiated claims that the police and the select board are somehow negligent in their duties. These people, without justification or firsthand knowledge, accuse the Canton police of being incompetent and corrupt while raising questions of the select board about the police department's investigation into the death of John O'Keefe. Your accusations and anger against the select board and the police are based purely on speculation and rumors. The Canton police, the select board, and the silent majority residents are not responsible for the divide within the Canton community. The divide in Canton community is caused by Karen Reed's defense team, an online blogger, his followers, and a small fraction of outspoken Canton residents influenced by imaginary tales of conspiracy. These people are self-serving while claiming to want justice for John and his family. I stand here today to tell you, as someone who wants nothing more than justice for John. The O'Keefe family is appalled and outraged by the public accusations, protests, and harassment of people closest to John and his family. The O'Keefe family supports the Canton Police Department and the select board. Some residents tearfully spoke about anonymous harassment in fearing for the safety of their families due to receiving a mildly contentious letter. Have you been blind to the constant vicious, hateful, abusive posts, letters, memes, messages, calls, visits, name-calling, and profanity that you that has been directed at my family and friends for the past eight months on social media, pages that you support? My nieces have been threatened and sexualized. If you support and fuel this grand conspiracy that includes a tax on the police and the select board, then you condone the abuse and harassment of everyone involved. Unlike you, my family didn't ask for this. They didn't insert themselves into a case. They are witnesses to some events and a tragic death of someone they loved. I realize that this tale of corruption is exciting for some, but this case will be tried in a courthouse, not by a blogger charged with felony witness intimidation and harassment who hurls profanities and attacks people's physical appearance for pleasure. It seems like the outspoken Canton residents may want to consider practicing tolerance and acceptance and ask themselves, why are they so quick to believe a false narrative concocted as a legal strategy? In closing, on behalf of my family and friends, I would like to say thank you to the select board and Canton Police Department. Don't let the efforts of a few overshadow the gratitude and appreciation of many. For those of you who are not happy with our select board, have some respect for the democratic process and allow them to do their jobs. The constant derailing of these meetings interferes with town business. Thank you to everyone who's offered support. And if you ask how you can help, please show up at the special town meeting on November 20th and stand behind your police department and your select board.
Left side. I left y'all right.
Gentlemen, thank you. I'm Jennifer Trawthaway. I live at 22 Leonard Street. In the past several months, our town has been divided by a number of issues, compounded one on the other. Regardless of any resident's individual feelings on these issues, the rift is hurting our town as a whole. There have been missteps all around, many of which have been made with the best of intentions. There's an us-versus-them atmosphere that is killing us. All of Canton's residents, while we of course have different preconceptions, perceptions, and concerns, have a common goal: to live in a welcoming, well-run, fiscally responsible town that both supports and is supported by its residents. I support the third-party audit because an outside company coming in will be able to shine light on what we're doing right and guide us in improving the areas where we need help. We need to move forward from this divisive place, and I truly believe that the audit will help with that, which is why I will be at the November 20th meeting voting yes on the audit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Rita Lombardi, 8 Kings Road. And I really don't have anything prepared. I know that's a shock. But, you know, we are, we are suffering, guys. We are suffering. And we really need to come together. We are, we are looking, we have come before you looking for leadership, looking for accountability. We do support the Canton Police Department. And and yes, we do. And just like any business, you have good employees and you have not-so-good employees. The same goes with the government and same goes with the police department. And we're just looking for accountability for people, you know, to do things. Audits are nothing to be afraid of. I worked for a company for 17 years. They did audits every year. It was compliance. They had to. And and then they audited the work that was performed. And so, you know, we, this country has been in, and I think this is reflective of what has been going on in this country for the last several years. We are at war with the truth. And the truth, you have the truth and then you have gaslighting. People who make statements like you just made that are unsubstantiated, that say we have done things without specifics. No! I'm not gonna sit down. I read some of the writing in this.
Wait a second, please, please. I know, excuse me, folks, excuse me, let the speaker speak, please.
Okay, look, all I'm saying, all I'm saying is if people are gonna make accusations, they should support it with facts and not just say somebody this or somebody. We know there's a big smear camp coming after us. People need to know what is truth. If people cannot defend what they said with facts, then it's gaslighting. And all I'm saying is I hope that we can come back together again as a community, but we have to start somewhere. And if we wait till after this trial, and by the way, none of us have come here asking questions about the trial. We're not asking, we're asking for leadership. And Tom, you and Mike know, I've met with you personally, and so have other people outside of this environment to help us move forward. That's all we want to do is move forward. And so, I wish you wouldn't laugh. It's a reflection of you.
Wait a second, please, please, please.
So anyways, listen, I've had enough, okay? All I'm saying is we, I didn't hear any of you denounce the letter that we received. You all wrote it. And it was full with vitriol and anger. I totally agree. And, you know, are we gonna wait for a tragedy, another tragedy, before we denounce it? And this is not, you know, we have done nothing violent or said anything that was untruthful. And we don't advocate for people to go and protest. If people are protesting, if people are throwing things or doing things, people have cameras. They need to take pictures and present the evidence, and those people will be held accountable. We do not support that kind of behavior. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mindy Millman. I live at 59 Walpole Street. And I first want to start out and say to just everyone to clear up something. I do not believe in banning books. Somehow that got out there. I ran for library trustee back in the last election. I do not believe in banning books. I never did. But what I'm here to discuss tonight is I just want to let my 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 opinion and my feelings be known. I'm here to support the select board and the police department. Until anybody shows me anything otherwise, I believe in everything that they're doing and the police department. I'm here to support them, every single one of them. They have my support. Thank you for all that you do. And it's a lot of hard work and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Anyone on that side would like to speak? We're just, we're kind of going back and forth. Then we'll go.
Hi, everybody. My name's Karen Kelly. I live on Randolph Street. And if you guys could just give me one second, I wasn't prepared, but I kind of am prepared. So I started a Facebook page a couple, about a month ago to try to combat the false rumors that have been going on around for these wonderful people sitting here that came to support the select board. We've all tried to connect on social media and these people have attacked and ridiculed us. We have tried to meet and they threaten the venues we approach. If you disagree with this mob mentality, they pour down hate and they ridicule us. They threaten people's livelihoods and their businesses. They demand to be heard while they do everything in their power to silence us. We have had enough. They want to transform our town to create a new form of governance. They can't win elections, so they want to nullify those who have been elected. Look around this country and these towns and these cities where the operatives have been successful. Look at San Francisco, New York City, Chicago, Portland. Look at Boston. Those cities are lost and now they're coming for our town, shamelessly using the cover of a murder trial to leverage to advance their political agenda. We all know who and why and why is behind this movement. We all know the leaders in the ponds. We should also know that in order to protect our community, don't sit back, fight back. November 20th, special town meeting at Canton High School at 7:00 PM. Vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Christine Smith, Three Meadows Ave. I, like most people on both sides of this who have spoken, you know, have been very upset by the divide that's in this town. And I just want to draw everyone's attention to the hard work that our finance committee has done over the past couple of weeks. I encourage everyone, whatever side you are, whatever opinion you have on this, to watch those meetings. It's an example of a thoughtful, well-informed process where all the voices are heard. They've worked through some very difficult issues and I think people should come to town meeting. Everyone should come to town meeting in both their conscience. But I think you should really be informed by facts and the work that the finance committee has done to put forward a path forward that will work for everyone in Canton, that will bring the town together, I think is really important. And Mr. Duty spoke to the warrant booklet that will be coming to everyone's mailbox next week. I urge everyone to read that. That has the facts, that has the motions, that has the intelligent discussions in it. And I think decisions should be based on that, not on rumors and memes and the statements. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have time?
About four minutes. Do you have? Okay. He's in. One minute and eight seconds. Unless someone's.
I just want to let you know. Anybody on that side? Just going back. Just trying to make sure.
I know.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Enough, I'm close enough. Okay. Good evening, guys. Trish Boyd, Canton resident. On November 20th, the special town meeting is being held at the Canton High Auditorium starting at 7:00 PM.
That has the facts, that has the motions, that has the intelligent discussions in it, and I think decisions should be based on that, not on rumors and memes and the statements. So, thank you.
Thank you.
[applause]
Do we have time?
About four minutes.
Do we have time?
About one minute.
No, Mike?
It's a minute and eight seconds, unless someone goes there.
He's going to let you know. Anybody on that side? He's going back. He's just trying to make sure.
I know.
Go ahead, then.
Okay. Enough, I'm close enough. Okay. Good evening, guys. Trish Boyd, Canton resident. On November 20th, a special town meeting is being held at the Canton High Auditorium starting at 7:00 p.m. To participate, one must be a Canton voter. One of the articles in the warrant is to ask citizens to vote for an independent audit of the Canton Police Department. I'm standing tonight in support of Canton Police. I noticed a sign yesterday that said, "Support Canton Police," or something to that effect. I know that the vast majority of the men and women of the Canton Police Force join the force and want to decree in law enforcement because they believe in upholding the rule of law. I'm guessing most would welcome an independent audit of the Canton Police Department. Audits are a reality of business and administrations everywhere, including police departments. As a small business owner myself, we've been audited many times, from applying for lines of credit to receiving certifications for our business. Anyway, the sign implies people don't support the force. On the contrary, we, the Canton residents, believe it will likely result in an A score. I believe that, anyway. But why not know for sure? It should be understood as a way to assess and possibly improve standard operating procedures. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? How much, do we have much time left, Mr. Carley?
We could do another speaker.
If anybody else would like to get up, have, say anything? Okay.
All right.
Okay.
They make a motion that we adjourn the November 7th meeting at 7:50.
Second.
Motion made in seconds will adjourn the meeting.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much, everybody, and we do, let's work together. Let's figure this out. Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. [end of transcript]